We have to switch over right now again.
We're on.
Okay. And now the meeting we've all been waiting for. We will call the Glendale City Council to order for a special meeting at 3:32 PM. And may we have roll call.
Council members Asatryan.
Here.
Divine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Kasakian. Mayor Protam-Brotman.
Here. And your report, please.
The agenda for Tuesday, December 6, 2022, special public meeting of the city council was posted on Wednesday, November 30, 2022, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And the first item?
First item, community development regarding stage one preliminary design review, case number PDR 2212056 pertaining to the proposed development of a new 682-unit, 8-story multifamily development with 935 parking spaces and public open space area on 4.57 acres located at 216 through 236 North Central Avenue, 212 West California Avenue, 201 West California Avenue, and 301 through 315 North Orange Street. A motion to approve stage one preliminary design review.
Thank you. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Kalanian.
Yes, Mayor Protam-Brotman, member of the city council. I'm just going to go to Vista Hazati or Planner to present this item. And the development team also is here. I'm pretty sure they are going to make a presentation as well.
Good afternoon and thank you. This is a proposal for a stage one preliminary design review for an eight-story, 95-foot-tall, 682-unit multifamily development with required parking and open space areas. The units themselves will range in size from approximately 540 square feet to 1,300 square feet, and they will include 37 studio units, 489 one-bedroom units, 138 two-bedroom units. There'll be one three-bedroom unit, and then at the ground floor, 17 live-work units are proposed. There will be a total of 935 parking spaces provided in one level of above-grade parking, two levels of subterranean. The above-grade parking is screened by the ground floor uses per the DSP requirements. The, as far as common open space, there is a second level. At the second level, there's approximately 32,000 square feet of common outdoor space. It includes a large lawn area for tenants, pools, decks, outdoor seating, and other similar amenities. And at the sixth and eighth floor, there will be rooftop decks that are kind of scattered throughout the buildings. The required publicly accessible open space will be provided in the form of corner courtyards and plazas, passeo and a park. The project is located in the Orange Central District of the DSP, and it consists of two sites that total 4.57 acres. Site A is approximately 161,000 square feet and features an existing retail building that was constructed in 1934. It's the former Sears Department Store. An existing three-level parking structure that was originally built in 1956. And there is an alley that currently bisects the site, and that would, will be a future alley vacation as part of the project. The second site, Site B, is approximately 38,000 square feet and is currently developed with the former Sears Vehicle Repair Garage. The blocks along the west side of Central Avenue and the east side of Orange are located in the Orange Central District of the DSP, which features a concentration of the newer high-density multifamily development and mixed-use development. The areas surrounding the project also include some one- and two-story commercial buildings as well as some city-owned parking facilities. The new project will be developed on Site A, and a park will be developed on Site B. This park area will provide a community benefit. In exchange for that, the applicant will be requesting a transfer of development rights during Stage Two to allow the density from Site B to be transferred to Site A. We currently do not have a TDR program. However, that is something staff is currently working on, and it will be part of the Stage Two review. The design of the project features two separate buildings that are connected at the ground floor through the parking area and at the second floor through the common open space. The ground floor features a combination of live-work units, one-bedroom, two-bedroom units, as well as amenity areas for the tenants. Vehicular access will be proposed from two new driveway entrances. One is mid-block along California, and the other is located along Orange towards the south of the project site. This slide illustrates the second-floor common open space that connects the two buildings. It includes an open lawn area. There are two pool decks for residents, outdoor lounge and seating areas, and other typical amenities like an outdoor kitchen and a fire pit. The proposed development has frontage on three streets. The frontage along Central is designated as mixed-use commercial and requires an 18-foot setback. Along California, the frontage is designated as mixed-use residential and requires a 16-foot setback. And along Orange, the frontage is actually undesignated, which requires a 10-foot setback. The design of the buildings are set back the required distances from all the frontages, and the project will also comply with the required parkway and sidewalk width requirements. In addition to site planning, the primary focus of the stage one review is the overall mass and scale of the development. Combined with detailing the building articulation and window patterns, the building separations and the modulations that are incorporated to the design, altogether these reduce the imposing appearance of the building's mass over the right-of-way. They also give the impression of multiple buildings on the site, which provides visual interest and, to the, at the pedestrian level and at the skyline. The project has appropriately incorporated the roofline height modulations required in the DSP to reduce the overall scale. Along the three street frontages, the height modulations range from approximately 12 feet to approximately 33 feet, where the DSP requires a minimum of 10. The design also includes stepbacks at the upper floors that range from approximately 6 feet to 48 feet. This allows for multiple roofline profiles and reduces the imposing appearance of the building. This slide illustrates the major and minor facade modulations that have been incorporated into the design along the street frontages as well as along the passeo area. These modulations enhance the overall design, create depth to the facades, and reduce the scale of the building's mass. The design provides six building separations along the frontages that range from 23 feet to 80 feet in width. For a project like this that occupies the majority of a city block, the separations are key to reducing the scale of the project. They provide opportunities for open space areas and visual relief by creating the appearance of two or more distinct buildings. On Site A, the required publicly accessible open space includes four courtyards and a ground-floor passeo. Site B will feature a substantially sized park that will be open to the public. The applicant has included conceptual landscape plans that show the programming of these spaces for your consideration. However, these details will be finalized through the Stage Two design review process. The passeo will be located along the southerly portion of the site and connects Orange with Central. Its configuration and conceptual design comply with the DSP requirements. The passeo at this location is also identified in the DSP as an area for opportunity to provide a landmark architectural feature that is a passeo. Each of the courtyards are 1,200 square feet and located at each of the building corners on the ground floor, and towards the south, they transition to the passeo. The courtyards encourage social interaction, help to expand the public realm, and they contribute to the livability of downtown. This slide illustrates the preliminary programming of the mini-park on Site B, which includes a large lawn in the center, outdoor seating and tables and landscaping. A general analysis of the architectural elements is provided in the staff report, but the building design and materials will be reviewed more thoroughly during Stage Two. The project's design is contemporary, and it uses different architectural solutions to articulate the street-facing facades, including high-quality and varied building materials, offset massing, recessed entries, windows, and ground-floor open space areas. The facades feature a combination of traditional and modern materials such as metal panels, brick, cast-in-place concrete, and horizontal siding. The materials are used to differentiate between the different volumes, which gives the impression of multiple buildings on the project site. At the street level, the facades feature human-scaled materials that visually separate the ground floor from the floors above, and they address the public sidewalk. Combined with the mix of uses at the ground floor and consistent with the DSP priorities, this will help promote pedestrian activity in our downtown. Staff will continue to work with the design team to ensure that all DSP requirements are being met for the design. Staff is recommending that the city council approve the stage one design review application with one condition related to the stoops and ground floor entries. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay. First check, how many callers do we have on the line? We have seven cards.
We have seven cards and one caller.
And one caller, okay. Well, let me take questions from my colleagues first, and then we will, we'll go to the public comment.
We're having some technical difficulties with the phone system. So if we could start with the speaker.
Yeah, well, we'll have questions. I'm sure that'll take a little while, and then we'll go to the cards. Okay, Councilmember Divine.
All right, thank you. I guess my questions. Was research done on this building, the Sears building, for its historic, the Art Deco architecture that might be underneath the facade in the front? Did the developer do any research? Do you want Rodney to answer that?
You can direct that to the applicant. We will do more extensive research during the Stage Two process as part of the environmental review.
But if we, but my question then becomes if we okay the Phase One, and they find something, then what happens?
Mayor Protam, council members. The property is not identified as historic or a contributor under the current South Glendale Community Survey, but as part of that Phase, or Stage Two, environmental review, if you request that the applicant look at whether or not that's historic and it is deemed historic, then appropriate mitigation strategies would have to be incorporated into the design. They may have to return with a new design at that point.
So what we have to request is an EIR?
You could, you could request it as part of the EIR in Stage Two.
Oh, okay. Second question. Why are there no actual commercial spaces or active participation by pedestrians? It's all work?
Live-work units, ground-floor live-work.
I mean, there's, as I understand it, you don't have a restaurant area. There's no place for like a gallery or a store of any sort that would encourage pedestrians activity?
Thank you for the question, council member. I do have a presentation that I would, would like to get through, may answer some questions, but I'll answer that question first, and then if I can get through the presentation, that might, that might answer some of these. The, the project that we've been working on, we've built a number of projects here in Los Angeles County, and what we found is it's very hard to integrate ground-floor retail into a vertically-integrated mixed-use project. Along Central, there is a significant amount of vacant space. Directly to the north of us, there is vacant retail space. The last thing that we want to do is come in and propose more retail that would either sit vacant or be a competition to the small businesses in Glendale or that are on-brand. And so we think that the best use of the ground floor of this project is to create incubator spaces that small businesses can operate out of and that residents of downtown Glendale could also live on the second floor. And in my presentation, I have a slide on how these live-work units will operate with also some renderings that might, that might answer that as well.
Because I have a concern on that because at the Onyx Apartments, there is a terrific restaurant, Bella Pizzeria, and there's also BB's, and they are always busy. And there's a lot of traffic, a lot of foot traffic, people dining, enjoying, enjoying those spaces. And why don't, why don't we let him do his presentation?
Yeah. Yeah, let's see, we have any other questions that are clarifying the staff presentation? We can take those, and then we'll go to the presentation.
I actually think it would be worthwhile for staff to clarify what, what our comments are going to mean today and the difference between Phase One and what we're really voting on today, because I think it's important for the public to also be aware of what, what the process looks like.
Yeah, so Stage One is primarily about amassing and site planning of the site. That does not preclude the city council from making recommendations. Obviously, we prefer comments regarding materiality, things of that nature. So obviously, those comments would be taken into account as they move into Stage Two, but this is predominantly about amassing and site planning.
And I have a question about this, this TDR policy. I guess we're working on a, a transfer of development rights policy. So what, what would happen if those development rights weren't available to the, to the applicant? I mean, if we, if we pass the Stage One and they're not available, is this counting on that, or how would that affect it?
This proposal is in, is in anticipation of a future TDR program. Earlier this year, city council had directed staff to look at a number of different things in terms of updating the downtown specific plan. In fact, earlier this year, we brought a series of changes. Two of the things that we're working on right now are the transfer of development rights program and considering minimum unit sizes. If that program were to not pass and not be adopted and incorporated into our zoning code, then obviously this, it would change the circumstances of this project. It would need to be redesigned to accommodate that.
But can you?
Go ahead, yes.
Can you define would have to be redesigned for, for what?
The density would have to be reduced as the density from Site, I believe it's Site B, is a Sears Automotive Site, is being transferred to Site A in exchange for that public benefit of a park. So if that program were to not be implemented, then that means that would have to move back over to Site, Site B.
And when would we, when would that be decided?
We are anticipating bringing the TDR program, I would say, first quarter of next year.
And how far along will they be in the process if we wait until then?
Being that we're in December now, probably not very far along.
So what's the worst-case scenario then? We don't have a TDR. What's the worst?
When you say worst-case scenario?
I mean, what, what impact would this be?
It would change this project, obviously. They would not be able to apply that density from Site B to Site A, and there, there would have to be a change in design.
And then we wouldn't have a park either? The park would be?
We would not have a park, correct. If you recall the original conversation, and, and the concept behind the TDR program was that in circumstances such as this, where you have common ownership amongst two separate lots, that by allowing that density to be moved from one in exchange for some sort of community benefit. Now, do keep in mind, that has not been defined yet by the city council, and that's part of what we will bring back, is what, what does the city council define as a community benefit? So in this case, the assumption is being made that a park would, would be a justifiable community benefit.
Well, then in that case, are we putting the cart before the horse here?
In regards?
To the TDR.
The design and the proposal is anticipation if that program were to pass. Now, now, obviously, we still have to bring that forward, but yes, this is, is precluding that at this point.
Just, just to follow up on that, so all the development rights that are being transferred, are being transferred onto Site A, there's nothing that's being kind of, there are no plans to monetize those development rights outside of these two parcels?
That is correct. It's, it's just being transferred from one site to another.
Okay, okay, that's, I didn't quite understand that. But in, in our discussion of TDR, we might also be talking about being able to transfer them to non-adjacent? Or is that not something we've talked about?
That was discussed when we first approached this conversation, I believe in 2021. There will likely be some component or alternative that would include essentially what you're referring to as, as a market for a transfer of development rights. Somebody could buy a bank from someone else and move it to that site. Now, with that being said, we would have a number of parameters and recommendations to ensure that if council did want to move forward in that direction, that it would be applied in appropriate locations.
Okay, okay, but that's not what's happening here.
Correct.
That, that clears that up, okay. Then let's ask the applicant to make his presentation. And how long do you anticipate this will be?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes, okay, thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Reese Pedersen, and I'm here as a representative for Trammell Crowe Residential. The project I'm presenting tonight is a proposed redevelopment of the former Sears Building, three-level parking structure adjacent to the east, and vehicle repair buildings on the north side of California Avenue. What you are going to hear today is that the project complies with the design standards, policies, and intent of the downtown specific plan, aligns with Glendale's economic development three-year strategic plan, and includes over $6 million in development impact fees, provides for 613 market rate, and 69 very-low-income residential units towards the 13,393 units needed per Glendale's regional housing assessment need, is proposed with sustainability in mind, and includes the construction and dedication of a .87-acre public park. Trammell Crowe Residential is the longest-standing apartment development company in the country. While our organization develops across the nation, the principles of the Southern California Division and its employees are all local. We own and build with our own in-house construction company and leverage our national platform to deliver high-quality institutional product. Our development team has the opportunity to do business throughout Southern California, and I would like to share with you what a great experience it has been working with Glendale's Development Services staff. I applaud their effort to implement the housing element goals and the recommendation to approve this project, which promotes smart-growth principles within your downtown. I'm here today because of a relationship we have fostered with Merlone Geyer Partners. Merlone Geyer is the owner of this redevelopment site. It is no stranger to mixed-use developments with 10 multifamily redevelopment projects spanning from California to Washington. This is not the first redevelopment partnership between, between Trammell Crowe Residential and Merlone Geyer. We recently completed a 644-unit development surrounded by 322,000 square feet of grocery-anchored retail, restaurant, and dining space just 10 miles from here called NoHo West. The proposed development site is highlighted. The south side of California Avenue is proposed for 613 market rate and 69 very-low-income residential units in prime downtown, in a prime downtown location with direct access to jobs, services, transit, and other downtown amenities. The project also features a substantially-sized, publicly-accessible .87-acre park that is located on the north side of California Avenue. The 4.57-acre project is programmed with a mix of public and private spaces, market rate and affordable residential units, and a public park that will provide for the needs and amenities of residents in the downtown workforce. This project has been exceptionally designed by our consultant team with the input of city staff to be something that is right for the community, aligns with the housing element and specific plan, offers residents an incredible heavily amenitized Class A living experience, and adds much-needed new housing to support local businesses and the transit downtown area. The proposed site plan is a result of architectural modulation and building setback requirements of the downtown specific plan. Vehicular access to the site is proposed from two new driveway entrances located mid-block on California Avenue and at the southerly portion of the site along Orange Street. All publicly-accessible open space is 100% open-to-sky, oriented towards and accessed from public streets, and appropriately integrated within the project's site planning. At the ground floor, courtyard and plazas are incorporated into the site planning with the building entries appropriately set back from the street. This creates new open space and better walkability within your downtown. The podium-level courtyards are open to Central Avenue and Orange Street to create visual porosity and limit long stretches of continuous building massing. At the southerly portion of the site, a new public passeo has been designed that provides mid-block pedestrian access from Orange Street to Central. This passeo will include enhanced paving, tables and chairs, trees, a dog-relief area, and outdoor workspace. This project complies with the downtown setback requirements of the downtown specific plan, which requires a minimum 10-foot setback for the building along Orange Street, a 16-foot setback from California Avenue, and a minimum 18-foot setback from Central Avenue. Complying with these setbacks will allow for parkway and sidewalk widening that will activate the pedestrian realm, which is a goal of the downtown specific plan. New public improvements along the project's frontages creates a safer pedestrian link between the different downtown districts. The ground floor features amenity rooms, live-work units, and one- and two-bedroom residential units. Building access from two new driveway entrances will be provided at grade-structured parking with, with direct-access garages for select units. The mix of units at the ground floor is consistent with the DSP requirements, which provide active and engaging uses at the street level. Architectural elements are introduced to separate the ground-floor levels from the floors above through the use of building modulation, materials, awnings, and canopies. Storefronts have been incorporated into the design of each building at the ground-floor frontages where the amenity rooms and live-work units are located. The project will include the construction and dedication of a .87-acre public park. During the initial planning of this project, we had the opportunity to meet with Glendale's Parks Department to discuss the design and uses within this park. We will be able to refine the programming of this park during our Stage Two design process. This dedication of this park will be in exchange for park费 credit. Included in the ground floor programming is 17 live-work units sized 1,000 square foot each. These units will provide flexible workspace, commercial-oriented design at the pedestrian level, and large storefront windows. The differentiating factor with these live-work units is the separation of live and work. The units are proposed as two-story units with all living space on the second level. We believe these will be very successful and act as an incubator for small businesses. This rendering is the main entry plaza at California and Orange Street. The building is set back at this corner and provides open, accessible space to the public. The exterior stairwell leading to the podium level is an amenity for all downtown residents and provides an area to sit and relax or enjoy a burger from the Great White Hut. Turning over to Central Avenue and Orange Street, you'll see an example of building modulation and a mixture of architectural materials. The palm trees centered in this rendering sit on the resident amenity deck, which is improved with a large resort-style pool, spa, chaise lounges, and indoor-outdoor clubroom. This rendering is also from Central Avenue and Orange Street, but takes a step back to show the entire building frontage. The podium-level courtyard opens to Central Avenue to create visual porosity and limit long stretches of continuous building massing. Moving to the south side of the project, this rendering is from North Central Avenue and our passeo. This rendering is looking northwest from Orange Street. On the left side of the rendering, you'll see the new drive access to the alley and our proposed project. This is the same view, but at night to show the building lighting. This project has significant affordable and economic benefits to the city of Glendale. With over 13,000 units needed for the city's regional housing assessment, the largest allocation of units is above moderate income. The approval of this project aligns with Glendale's economic development three-year strategic plan and includes over $6 million in development impact fees. This development is a large community investment that will create jobs, tax revenues, and attract new residents, bolstering local spending. and attract new residents, bolstering local spending. In addition to being an economic benefit, this project is proposed with sustainability in mind. The improvements will be constructed with energy-efficient windows, public open space, EnergyStar appliances, EV car chargers. The project will also have solar and battery storage, is adjacent to the Transit Corridor project, and includes approximately 230 trees, 17,000 square feet of shrubs, and 11,000 square feet of lawn. We respectfully ask that you approve this project that complies with the design standards, policies, and intent of the downtown specific plan, aligns with Glendale's economic development three-year strategic plan, includes over $6 million in development impact fees, provides for 613 market rate and 69 very low-income residential units towards the 13,393 units needed per Glendale's regional housing needs assessment, is proposed with sustainability in mind, and includes the construction and dedication of a .87-acre park in exchange for park fee credit. Members of my design team, a representative for Merlone Geyer, our land use council, are all here today to answer any questions you might have. I look forward to discussing this project further with you, and I truly appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that. I think we'll just go, do we have, does that complete your presentation?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay. Let's go to the cards first. Is that all right? We'll go to the cards, we'll go to the callers, and then we'll come back and have our discussion. Okay.
So, our first caller is Christopher Carrasso. Christopher, you're on...
Excuse me, I'm gonna call on the people that are here first, okay? And everybody will have three minutes to speak, because we don't have, we have seven cards. I think that's reasonable. So let's do that first. We'll have the people that are present in the chambers come and speak, and then we'll go to the callers, okay? So we will start with Ms. Catherine Yurka.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for taking my comments. I have absolutely no argument with bringing housing to this site, and I'm thrilled to see that 15% will be affordable. I like the park component, of course. The question, though, is really what kind of downtown do we want? And what kind of development downtown do we deserve? I've appreciated staff's efforts to address design deficiencies with downtown development through the revised DSP. But I think this project reveals the limits of a kind of checklist approach to development. I have no doubt this has the right number of modulations, uses the right mix-and-match exterior materials, it has the right number of stoops, and it certainly keeps within the 95-foot height limit. But all this nonetheless adds up to a very blocky, superficially varied, but basically uniform project. I learned in the staff report that this project could rise to as high as 245 feet, and I found myself wondering, why didn't it go taller? Rather than this relentless, virtually-uniform height, there could be much greater height variation with this project. You know, I've read a lot of staff reports at this time in my life, and they have a tendency sometimes to feel like just words. Terms like "visual interest" and "human scale" did not seem to have any definable meaning to me. And "high quality" appears to mean the opposite. Hardyboard siding, Trespa laminate-clad panels, brick veneer, plaster-cement tiles, I'm sorry, cement tiles and plaster, these are objectively not high-quality materials. And high-quality materials are required by the DSP. I do think, Councilmember Devine, that you're right. This is putting the cart before the horse. I think this should be sent back so that the city can find out the state of the Art Deco facade. It makes absolutely no sense to do this as part of a future environmental review. The environmental review takes place once the project is ready to go. It's too late at that point. Certainly reuse is the best outcome for this property for environmental as well as aesthetic reasons. A few other points, please don't give away the alley. I don't understand why the city would make a present of this, why it would be privatized. The paseo is, does not belong to the public. It's accessible, but it's still private space. Also, I find this coming when the TDR is still up on the air very confusing. Also, it's important to point out that some of that park space meets the required publicly accessible open space. So the entirety of the park cannot be used to calculate the density. It would have to be relative to the other space. Also, if you could just clarify if the city is going to prepare an EIR for this project? Or a SCA? Because those are two different documents with different implications. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can we actually get that question answered right now? Is it an EIR or a SCA?
That is ultimately up to council's discretion, but the plan right now is for an EIR.
Okay. Is that something we would decide today?
No, no, not today.
Okay. Okay. Okay, next speaker is Bruce Merritt.
Good afternoon, members of the council. When I look at this project, I think the thing that comes to me is that it's really a lost opportunity. This is a substantial, a large piece of prime downtown real estate, just off the main drag of Brand Boulevard. It has somewhere buried in underneath the stucco, and we don't know what could possibly be a magnificent Art Deco building. This is an opportunity really to define what we want downtown to be, how we want Glendale to be perceived as a place of taste, of style, of an exciting urban experience. And yet, when you look at this, I'm not criticizing the architecture. It's fine. They're nice-looking buildings. They do comply with all of the various specifics that are set forth in the specific plan. But it does not begin to really meet the expectations of the specific plan for creating an enlivened downtown experience, an active streetscape. That's what's totally lacking in this. And this is a plan that was adopted by this council with the input of the public stakeholders, your constituents. This is the kind of downtown that they wanted. This is not the sort of development that's going to advance that objective. Now, just on a personal level, I lived for a number of years in New York City. It has its share of problems, and I'm not suggesting that we want to make Glendale New York City. But one thing that I think everybody admits about New York City is that it's one of the most exciting urban spaces in the world. And what makes it exciting is not the skyline. Unless you're coming in on the Staten Island Ferry or you're standing in Queens, you're not inspired by the skyline. What makes New York City and Manhattan exciting is what's going on on the street level. Not 40 floors above, not even one floor above, on the street level. And what makes it exciting is retail space, restaurants, bars, probably too many Starbucks, I'll give you that. But there is an energy that comes with that kind of human activity. And that's basically, to sort of say we're going to have wide-planted sidewalks so that there's plenty of walkability, that's not the same thing. And there are parts of Manhattan that are very desirable, parts of the Upper West Side, Chelsea, where the density is really no greater than it is on parts of the central corridor, south of the freeway. And yet, there is an excitement there that makes people want to come there, makes people want to visit there, makes people want to live there. We could be doing something like that in downtown Glendale. But what we need to do, I think, is we need to see what's under the stucco. There could be a very, very interesting development that could build on that. We need to have some retail, some things going on on the street level. I hope you will require that and keep faith with the plan. Thank you very much.
Okay, next is Frank Higginbottom.
Hello. Hi. Good afternoon, councilmembers. Many of you know me as a longtime resident here in Glendale and person that has been involved in many of your campaigns and getting elected to these positions. So I wanted to come today because I really feel like this building has a great opportunity for the city to actually do the right thing and figure out what's under it before you start advancing plans to tear down and build this. And then, looking at this and hearing the plans today, I see many reasons for why I don't think it's a good idea and why you should vote against it. I think that not having the pizza place, the ice cream place, the coffee place, those are the places that bring in money, those are the places that bring in family businesses to start there. And there's too many buildings in Glendale that don't have that, that I see were built in the last decade or two. And those corridors are dead, and you drive by and there's nobody out, there's nobody walking, you just see the building. And so I'm concerned about that. And also, I wanted to sort of make you guys aware that I heard the Housing Authority was here today talking about stuff previously. How many of these places would be available for Section 8 people? And as a person who is now a longtime resident that got sick with COVID and is now on dialysis, I'm having a hard time finding a place to live in Glendale. And it's a place I lived for 20 years. And I think that this concerns me, so that's why I drove here from Long Beach today where I'm living currently, because I don't feel like I have an opportunity to come back to my city. So that's my recommendations. I hope you guys will take it into consideration and the many years that I've been involved in Glendale politics and issues. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Joanne Sitjer. Did I pronounce that right?
Good afternoon, councilpersons. I am a 30-year resident of Glendale, California. I have, I own property and live on California Avenue blocks from this proposed development. I have seen all the development of the apartments down Central, and I agree with some of the comments here about the density and the unfriendliness of the developments and the properties that have been put on, the apartments that have been developed there. I'm opposed to this project. One for the way it's going to look, and also because I think we're losing the opportunity to preserve what may be under that building in the Sears building. There hasn't been the study of what's under there. Also, that I can see that Glendale wants to build more housing. They can do that maybe with a parking structure and the automotive center. But why not look at preserving the Sears building, what might be there, and reusing that for something that the city can be proud of, since it was one of the first department store buildings in the country that Glendale was known for? So I urge you to reconsider approving this project as it stands. Looking at the IR, I'm also not sure if this building is being proposed as a lead building, which is sustainable architecture, that kind of thing, that would be a concern. Also, because I do live on that street with the development of all the other apartments, there's been so much traffic, and this would bring a lot more traffic to that area, which was detrimental to the neighborhood, since we have so much people going up and down the streets through there. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. And next speaker, Talin Avanesian.
Hi, I'm a 40-year resident of Glendale. And a few things that I had concern, A, is the traffic. Congestion is really, really bad. And I always think about the safety. Sometimes I see ambulances, police, fire trucks, that they can't get through because it's so congested. How much more congestion is going to come with this? And second, how expensive these apartments are going to go for. Right now, a one-bedroom, a rundown one-bedroom is going for over $2,000. These new one-bedrooms are going to be at least going rate, they said, about $3,000. Who's going to afford to live in these? They have to make three times a month rent. These are going to be people that make $9,000 a month to live in these. And the average people are not making that much money to live in these apartments that are going to be going up. So if you can please take into consideration of the rates, the traffic, we're also in a drought. A lot of people are complaining they can't water their yards. But how much water is it going to take to make a building this big? How many toilets are going to be getting flushed, water being used? And I know some people that live in hospitals, that work in hospitals in Glendale, it's getting jam-packed in there because there's a lot more residents living here, and it's impacting the hospitals. Are there extra schools being built for all the extra families moving in this community? I feel like we should be able to look all around to make sure this is good for the entire community of Glendale, not just this one little section. And I live a block and a half away from there, and these are the streets that I used to walk my dog 20 years ago. And now it's just big, giant buildings that I don't even see any sun when I'm walking around because they're just so high up. But just to take into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Damian Sullivan.
I should have bought the Great White Hut when I had the chance. Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you again. It's great to see everybody again. I think I started this conversation a week ago when I stood up here and I gave preliminary thoughts. And if you recall, last Tuesday, I started by saying that I'm optimistic and hopeful about everything that we could be doing about the future of this town. I think that I'm sincere when I say I believe this is the best city council that we've had in all of the time I've ever lived in Glendale. I'm proud of the stewardship and the representation that each and every one of you have given. I can recite things that I've seen you say and do. When Dan stood up a couple of weeks ago about the BioGlass Plant and said, you know, we probably may have to do this, but it really bothers me that we don't have the buy-in from the public. That is, that was a surprising piece of courage to say that. And I remember Aura telling Carmel Partners a few years ago, we asked the Altana, what's your residency? You ask all these things from us, you won't give us the numbers. But you want all these variances and extra permissions, but when we want to be a partner with you, our hand gets slapped. And I remember that. And Paula, I always say, I tell people when I talk about Paula all the time, I say, what I really appreciate is that Paula watches our money as if it's actually coming from her purse. And that's very valuable to have somebody that cares enough to be taking care of you. And Ellen, I campaigned for Ellen with a deep conviction that the green spaces and she says, I have a vision for Glendale. I share that vision for Glendale, with dog parks and green spaces. This is a great city, and great cities do great things. And I have faith that you will be thoughtful, as I said last week, in what we develop for the future. The Sears building that exists right now is an example of a landmark building. The architect is famous, George Nimmons, and that was a machine-age Art Deco building of epic proportion. It was a prototype for all department stores that followed. The first building built inside-out, which means the merchandise was laid out and how the different layouts were going to go. And then they built the building around instead of making a building and putting merchandise into it. That was copied by every other city in America and by all of the department stores. Mary Baldwin, who's a great resident of Glendale, whose family owned the Great White Hut, watched them put the facade panels in the '70s over the windows and in the tower. I've heard from numerous residents that, and to me, it's almost, it would be great to know that those great touches are under there. But even if they're not, the zigzag staircases and the escalator and all the other elements that are inside that building, this is a landmark building that should never be torn down. It's inconsistent with the values that we all talk about with electric buses and riding our bikes and plastic silverware. We don't throw, great cities don't throw great buildings in the garbage can. So I hope, so much more to say, obviously, but we've done it with the Caruso building on Brand. We could do it with this building. Reclaim, save this building, like the Boston Landmark Center. Turn it into a place like other cities are doing with their Sears Towers that are living history, embracing the heritage, respecting the past.
Sorry to move you along.
Three minutes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Pedersen, I have your card, but was there something?
Do you mind if I respond to a few of the?
Let's go, let's get the calls first, and then, because there are a few questions. I'm taking note of some of them, and you can respond to them. So who do we have on the phone?
Our first caller is Christopher Carrasco. Christopher, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Carrasco. I'm a junior member for Southwest Monter, State Regional Council of Carpenters. And I'm a local carpenter. I live on the city of Southland, which is not, which is not too far away from Glendale. In a crisis like this, it would help a lot of people like me, they live close to home. What I'm saying, I encourage the city to hire contractors, the work with unions, they can hire people who work locally. Also, they can pay civilian wages, and then we can give or benefit such as medical, visual, and dental. Also, as a carpenter, if we live and work close to home, our economy will increase. In moving forward, our pollution and the air, it will be less because it's going to be less driving. So what I'm saying is, I encourage to these council members to encourage the developers to hire contractors, responsible contractors, who can hire carpenters, and they can local hire carpenters. So please, any construction, any development, anything you guys do, just consider it to hire local hire carpenters, union carpenters, one of the best labor workforce in the United States, then you can hire your product, deliver faster and with a high quality. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next caller is Mike Mulhill. Mike, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Our next caller is Mike Mulhill. You're on air. You have three minutes. Good evening, councilmembers. Name is Mike Mulhill. Sorry, I'm not there today. I just had eye surgery in the morning, so I'm not able to make my presence. What is very disappointing this afternoon is to hear no one say the word, "We need a regional park for South Glendale." Let me say it again. We need a regional park for South Glendale. This council and previous council have destroyed Central Park with buildings, a museum, a library, a recreational center. We have no, for a major city, all we have are mini parks. In fact, if, from what the staff report is saying, that with the former Sears Auto Center, that's going to be another mini park for the people who live in South Glendale. The people in South Glendale deserve a regional park, just like other parts of the city. Let me repeat myself. South Glendale deserves a regional park and not more buildings. We have plenty of high density. We have plenty of people. Listen, I've been in Glendale since the age of 12, and I'm now 80. When I came here with my parents, I think Glendale's population was probably like 80,000. Today, we have over 200,000. We need, are we trying to reach the 300,000? We don't need more people. We don't need more traffic. We don't need more density. What we need is a regional park. And if this council decides to say, let's get the money from the state of California or the federal government or wherever, and buy the property, you will be remembered historically as having a legacy of having built a regional park, not a monstrosity of 682 apartments and 69 low-income apartments. Is this your legacy to have a 682 apartment complex? Sure, we always need housing, but how about, how about a recreational area for the people who are already living here in Glendale? Don't the people who already live in Glendale deserve a park and Central Park? Not more apartments? I'm repeating myself. You can read all about it in my community newsletter this week. Laura Freeman came before the state of council and never talked about regional park for South Glendale, and she's from Glendale. We have the money. It's available. If you, you know, there's an old thing, if you had the desire, you'll find the will. You all went to college, most of you, and you found the resources to go to college, didn't you? You borrowed, steals, whatever, you got it. Well, the city of Glendale can find the resources to build a regional park. We already destroyed what is now called Central Park.
Your time is up. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration. Bye now.
Our next speaker is Mike Borisov. Mike, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Hello, Mayor Pro Tem Brodmann and councilmembers. My name is Mike Borisov, and I'm speaking today to express my views as a Glendale resident and advocate for affordability and sustainable sustainability improvements. Today, I'm asking for your support to improve staff recommendations to improve stage one preliminary design for the proposed multifamily development located on North Central Avenue. One of the city's major goals is to maintain, preserve, and develop balanced housing opportunities. This contemporary 682 residential unit project can only aid in reaching the state's strict RINA regulations, but also ease the local housing crisis that is occurring in the city of Glendale. I moved into this city at a young age, and I've seen rents skyrocket this past decade. Everyone is feeling the rent burden. This project offers an opportunity to cool down the price of rent in the city, making it easier for lower-income families to get by during an uneasy economic environment. This project allows Glendale a plan for the future for providing substantial amounts of housing, much-heated green space, and a redevelopment of an ice floor. Lack of access to affordable housing is the leading cause of overdoses, drug addiction, homelessness, mental health issues, emotional stress, poverty, crime, and a general plunge in social equity. Without access to affordable housing in Glendale, many people unfortunately find themselves working two jobs to pay rent, spending less time with their children and loved ones, and spending well over 30% of their income on rent, becoming rent-burdened individuals. This is much more than simply housing. It's about the empathy we have for those struggling to make ends meet, the outlook we have on universal access to good quality housing, and the principles we have on for caring for our neighbors. Affordable housing, unfortunately, is almost always shot down by the well-off, by those who don't seek to connect with those who make less than them, and by people who rather have schools be exclusive to the wealthy who can afford to live in the area. Working-class families deserve better. Today, I am asking to break the status quo, to prove them wrong, to propagate social justice, and propel our city towards a greater standard of living. Please vote yes on this project. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our final caller is, our final caller is John Schwab Sims. John, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hello, Mayor Pro Tem Brodmann and Glendale City Councilmembers. Thanks a lot for allowing us to speak. This is John Schwab Sims, president of the Glendale Historic Society. Would like to just stress that TJHS fully supports new housing at the Sears site to help ease our, to help ease our housing crisis. But we do have serious concerns about these poor profits, definitely understanding the historic status.
Well, let's, we'll go, we'll go to Mr. Pedersen for a brief comment. I did want to say, maybe you can address, there was a question about lead, whether this is a lead building, and maybe you can, you can talk about that. There was also a question about low income, and I should just mention for Mr. Higginbottom, if you didn't hear, 69 of the units will be for very low income. So that is, maybe somebody could explain. What we categorize as very low income right now, but it's the lowest category that we measure.
Does that include Section 8?
Let me, we don't want questions from the audience, but I will answer that one. I don't, I don't know specifically, I don't think specifically there would be any Section 8, but there would be units, 69 units that would be dedicated towards people with very low incomes.
That's correct. They are separate. Yeah, separate programs. Thank you. I'll try to keep this quick. I want to answer some of the questions that were brought up and clarify a few items. This part of this project, and before we come back to you for stage two, we will prepare a, or there will be a EIR prepared for this project. So we will study historic, and we will study traffic as part of this proposed development that you are looking at today. One of the bigger topics today was the historic. Teresa Grimes prepared a Phase 1 historical assessment. The results of this report clearly stated that the Sears building is not listed or determined to be eligible under state landmark or historic district programs, not listed in Glendale's designated historic district, or listed in Glendale's register, not identified as significant in the 2018 South Glendale Historic Resources Survey Report, and does not meet the registration requirements for architecture and design context. Historical resources are one of the environmental areas that will be evaluated as part of the CEQA process. This evaluation will be part of our EIR that city council will consider as part of our Stage 2 hearing. We ask for your approval today to progress our analysis of the proposed improvements in the Sears building. Switching over to traffic, the traffic evaluation will also be part of our EIR, and council will consider that as part of our Stage 2 hearing. Moving on to the design, one of the best parts of my job is having the opportunity to work with the most skilled and well-respected designers in California. I'm always focused on hiring the best architects to come up with design solutions that we're all proud of. We rely on their vision and experience to propose and construct award-winning buildings. At the end of the day, my goal is to develop a project that we all drive by, point out to our family and friends, and be proud of what was constructed. The purpose of today's hearing is to focus on the project's consistency with the DSP, and that we ask for your approval to continue working with city staff to refine the design and to be something that we are all proud of. As it relates to rent, there was a comment that the rent is too high. We do have 69 very low-income units in this project, but one of the best ways that we can address the high rents is by providing more supply. The RINA numbers show that there's over 13,000 units needed in Glendale, and that undersupply of units is what's driving the increase in rent. This project will comply with, when we, once we get, if we do get through our Stage 2 approval, and we get through our planned development, and we submit to the city for building permits, which is far down the road, we will have to comply with all of state and local building requirements. Those building requirements and the lead design requirements are always changing. This last year, actually, as of January, once we come in, we're having a new Title 24 update, and so we will have to comply with all of those. Right now, the new Title 24 meets some of the lead designations. And so once we get to that point, we'll know exactly what the building will have to be as far as efficiencies and energy compliance.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, just one, one more I'd like to address, the retail. I'd like to have Jameis William from Merlone Guyer Partners, who's the owner of the site, address why we have not incorporated ground-floor retail. They own a lot of retail in Southern California and across Western U.S., and I'd like for him to address that. That's okay.
I think that's important. Let's just hold on. We'll do that, and then we'll go to the caller.
Do I need to give this to someone?
Oh, yeah.
Jameis William, Managing Director with Merlone Guyer Partners. We own and operate and lease over 16 million square feet of retail on the West Coast. And this is actually the 18th Sears building that we've redeveloped. We have a good relationship with Sears, and they've, their business model hasn't really kept up with the times, so their, their buildings keep coming back to the market. And we've, we've yet to run into a historical issue on one of their buildings. They've been analyzed considerably, and I think that's worth noting. As it relates to the retail, we, our team looks at every redevelopment, ideally through some type of a retail inclusion, right? We want to include retail typically. What we find in urban environments especially is that primary arterials is where the retailers want to be located. And even in, even in cities like New York City, or Hollywood, or downtown LA, there are certain arterials that succeed from a ground-floor retail perspective, and there are others that fail. If you were to look at the retail that's even to the north of us as part of the legendary Glendale project, which is a multifamily building directly north of our, our site on California, there's considerable vacancy in that ground-floor retail that was incorporated as part of that project. When we look at the retail on brand, we see that as a better area to drive thriving businesses, small businesses, rather than to incorporate more supply into a ground-floor building on a secondary or tertiary arterial. So for, for those reasons, along with others, we, we do not recommend, and we would have difficulty leasing up ground-floor retail, which is what you see in some of those other projects in the ground-floor retail. And the last thing that, that we want is there to be vacant storefronts. It's better to have these live-work units, as Reese was mentioning, where there is activity, and there's opportunity for incubator, incubator spaces. And a lot of the retail even that was designated on, in some of these, these spaces, in fact, we took, we did a market tour, we've done several market tours, and a lot of it are set aside. They're, you know, insurance agencies, they're kind of, they're partial retail, partial office, which is really what this live-work lends itself to, as opposed to a true retailer, restaurant environment. So just wanted to share that.
Okay. Thank you. And we'll go to the caller that got dropped, John Schwab Sims.
So we have John Schwab Sims again on air. John, you're on air. You may speak. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Great. Does, does everybody hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, yeah. I'm not really sure what happened there, but yeah, yeah, but that's what I was saying. TJHS fully supports new housing at the Sears site to help ease our, ease our housing crisis. But we do have concerns about moving forward with this project without fully understanding the historic status of the Sears building. I believe the developer just noted that their consultant, Teresa Grimes, determined that the site isn't historical, but I don't think that that determination can be made without knowing what actually lays beneath. Key character-defining features may still be intact under the cladding, and this should be resolved before moving forward with the final design. I also have to note that you don't need an EIR to actually look underneath the cladding, so that should be done as soon as possible. And I believe that city council should confirm plans with the developer when to do that, when that review would happen, and then be clear and transparent with what they find. At that point, you should be clear when an EIR would, would then be performed. So that's what I had. I hope to, I hope that city council takes our concern seriously, and thanks for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that's all of our callers, right? Okay. So let's go to discussion, and Councilmember Satrian, you want to kick it off?
So I'll start off by saying that I'm still upset that we didn't purchase this property to convert it to, the whole thing into a regional park. And Mr. Mulhill actually had that in my notes before you called in. I've been one of those that's been complaining about the buildings that are built on Central, the way that they've been built, the fact that it lacks the proper public space and the walkability and to bring about neighborhoods. So I've seen your other projects. I've also come out to the NoHo site. I think you've done some wonderful, beautiful projects elsewhere, and I think we're getting the short end of the stick here with this one. I have a long list of comments on this particular project, and I hope that as we move forward that you will take these into consideration. I'd like to see for at least some of the areas for us to build up and have more of a high-rise, maybe one or two of the towers leaving the remaining as additional open If you, can we go to A 7.3?
Which slide number would that be, at the bottom right?
Presentation that we had was, was A 7.3.
We would need to change back over to the staff's presentation. Thank you.
What did we do? Hold on. Hold on. It's the same, yeah, but it's the same area. I'd like to see more, for you to break up the white and add some variation of materials to the site. If there's a way to do connector alleys from the beginning to the end. The live-work, I understand that you've mentioned about, you know, you've done this in other cities, and your assessment, staff, correct me if I'm wrong, are other live-work areas that we have occupied now, is it working in Glendale?
We only have a handful of live-work right now, so the argument could be made that we don't have enough yet and haven't realized the full potential, but it could also be argued that they haven't quite performed to the expectations that we would have maybe have liked to see.
So ideally, I'd like to see small businesses and businesses and coffee shops and restaurants on the first floor. The four corners that you have that look like they're open space, I'd like to see them function more like an open space and less like an entry to your building. So more landscaping at grade and actual usable space. As you're going into Stage Two, I definitely want forensics done to see what's underneath. I'm not okay with demolishing the building without seeing what's underneath and if it could be reused or preserved. I'd like to see some art and murals. You have this in your NoHo property. Some of the walls actually have art on them, and I think it nicely breaks up the walls. And so if you can incorporate some sort of green walls and art and mix of those on this project, that'd be great. Again, variation of materials and height. I don't like that, at the end of the day, it's kind of chopped up and boxy. The park and open space, I know you gave us much more than we needed to see at this stage, but I want to give you my comments anyway. I'd like to see more green space and trees rather than concrete for the park. If we can include outdoor fitness equipment, like we have at Maple or some of our other parks, a small playground, and any amenities that I think that community may find resourceful to them. And I'd like to hear about thoughts from my council members on possibly putting a restroom in that park, like we've had in some other parks. As it relates to housing, I'll be honest, I wish this was like 100% affordable housing project that we had, but I know you have the 15%. I'd like to see some additional mix of affordable housing. I know you have the very low, but adding some low and moderate housing. And I think I made a comment to this when I visited the NoHo site, but, and I think I brought this up for another project as well, but I really want us to take a look at if we can start incorporating solar for individual units. And so as you're looking at your affordable housing units within this project, to see if we can add solar for those individuals, and I'm happy to provide you with some examples of companies that allow for they, for those solar panels to be installed, for example, on balconies and within those individual units. You know, when I think about your North Hollywood site, one of the things I really loved about that was there was so much open space and green space and common use when you were stepping out of the buildings. You had one area that was dedicated for like kids playing and this very creative like playground set that you had, and that, and it felt like it was within the design. It wasn't like across the street. And then you had the whole big dog park area. And so I know these comments are a lot, but I hope that you'll take them into consideration, and I look forward to hearing what my colleagues have to say.
Okay. And on, some of these comments seem to be kind of recommendations for Stage Two, so I couldn't tell whether you're saying you support Stage One approval today, or are some of these things barriers to Stage One approval? That's, I think would be helpful to know where you are overall.
I think, I mean, we're moving, if we're going to move into Stage Two, they're going to be taking the recommendations that we give today, correct?
That is correct.
So, you know, as they move into Stage Two, they would have to take all of these things that each of us are saying.
Right. But we first have to approve Stage One today, so are you, where are you as far as your comfort level with Stage One approval?
I'm...
Or do you want time to think about that?
No, it's not a matter of I want to think about it. I think it's, I want to hear what you, where you guys stand and how we move forward together as a team on Stage Two.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Devani?
I have a question about the open space. Page 17 of our report, 17 of 120. The chart, the, says open space for Project 3.0 FAR, project design 90,139, and residential open space are standard, is not, should be 95,000, so they're actually below what they should be. The project has 90,139 square feet of open space, and residential open space DSP standard should be 95,480. Is that an error?
What calculation?
I know. It's okay. It's okay. Let's just get the answer.
Okay. Why don't you come forward now?
Honorable councilmembers, Sean Matzler with Cox Castle &amp; Nicholson. I'm land use counsel to Chammel-Croft. The calculation you mentioned, that's going to be one of our requested density bonus law, concessions or incentives. So you're right that the development doesn't meet the standards in the DSP. We're requesting a reduction of those standards pursuant to state density bonus law.
Can you explain that to me? How that works?
So as part of the Stage Two, they will be submitting the density bonus application. They are granted incentives and concessions as part of that process where they ask for deviations from code standards, so this would be, this would be one of those requests.
To get down on the open space. I don't know that I'm happy with that. Okay. Is your architect AC Martin, is that the architect for this?
That's I'm here.
I'm sorry? He's, yes. But that is, that is the correct information. Because I've gotten emails that say that he is, his historic reputation is visionary, and yet I look at this and I don't see visionary. What I've heard today is relentless uniform height, unrelentless facade. I looked at, this is A 0.20 of our staff report, and you're, there seems to be more modulation and articulation on Orange Street than there is on Central. Central is the street where we're going to be seeing this building, and all I see is a flat facade with very little modulation. The staff report said that because of the modulation and et cetera, that there was a reduction in mass and scale, and I don't see a reduction in mass and scale at all. Again, and I agree with Councilmember Satrion, that that flat rooftop and everyone else that's written about that, I think is boring. This is like, and I don't want to be harsh, I really don't want to be harsh about this, but this is the same old, same old, same old. I thought that we had changed, revised our design guidelines for the DSP, and that we would be seeing interesting buildings, good architecture in our buildings on Central. And the first one that I see is this one, and it just reminds me of everything else that's on that concrete tunnel. And I think that it behooves you, and you, the developers and staff, to investigate that facade, the Sears Building, what's under there before we do anything. I don't think we need to wait for the EIR. I think you need to use, I think you need to articulate more the, I understand, we want it taller. I've always wanted taller apartment buildings. Reach for the sky, so it doesn't take up so much bulk, and as I understand it, it's too expensive for you to do that, so you've cut it off at 95 feet. You have 600 apartments here. I don't know how much, how much, you know, the rent is going to be, but, and the swimming pool on Central is to me like shocking. I just, I had to question that. I said, is that swimming pool actually on Central? Yes. Okay. I do believe there should be some commercial, it doesn't have to be all commercial, on the ground level. I think you can have space for a tavern, for a small restaurant. I think the, and I know, I think there was one, what are you calling it? Live-work space. There was one over in the Sealy Building, and I drove by there, and I think it's closed. You know, it just probably didn't work out. I don't know. So I don't know that we need that many of those. I'd rather see trees and walkability and places where our residents can get involved and enjoy walking in our city. The materials, I think you have to upgrade those materials and take them, not just, you know, not just on the ground level, but take them up to give the building a little bit more interest. Maybe another separation on Central like you have on Orange. I mean, if anyone looks at these and they say, well, this should be on Central, but no, that's Orange, and Central is just one street block. You have, in our report, we've received this picture with all of these different materials and facades, and they're beautiful. And yet I look at this and I, all I see is white. And I mentioned that the last time this project was here, that I did not like all of that white. And I don't know that anything changed since the last time you presented this. So we definitely need more interest. So I think as far as the massing is, it's, it just is too massive. The scale is too big. I mean, there needs to be some work. I agree that in the park, it would be really fun to have a little playground there for kids, because I'm sure that with, you know, two bedrooms, you know, there may be some kids, even in other apartments, people that live in that area, they may, they may want, they may have children and take it, take them to the park. Let me see what else. I do believe this is a loss opportunity right now, and I hope that we can, we can save it and make it something, you know, you said, a design that we're all proud of, and that's what we want. You know, we want a design that our residents are proud of, that we are proud of approving. And right now, unfortunately, this isn't it, and I hope that you will work a little bit harder to change that, that look. I looked at a YouTube video that was sent to me today on an adaptive reuse of a Sears in Boston, and it was phenomenal, phenomenal. You have a great architect. Let him, let him fly, let him do his thing. Don't, don't limit to block after block, box after box. Let's get some interesting. I think that's it for me. I think I agree with most of what Councilmember Satrion said, and I think I am not ready to approve this project today.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Najari?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. So I've been listening to what the residents have had to say, and I think I agree with a lot of their concerns. Unfortunately, today's issue before us can only be the subject of scale and massing of the, of the project. So limiting my discussion to scale and massing, I would like to see greater vertical articulation. I would like to see some of these buildings, or what appear to be different buildings, some of these components to be several stories higher than others. I would like to see the central facades to be greater, more greatly articulated with, whether it's glass, or whether it's indents, or something to the building front. I think we're looking at what we currently have on Central, and we're looking at that and saying, that's not really what we're looking for. Those are very much more monolithic types of buildings. Although this has, in certain areas and certain angles, it is what I'm looking for. I mean, for instance, this angle here at the top, I do like that. There's a lot of interior articulation and back and a lot of glass, but around the corner on the right side of that, it doesn't share the design that the, that the left side has. And on the one below that, the lower picture, I don't like that three- or four-story gray stucco appearing feature. So I'd like that to look, like the whole building to look more like the left side of the, the top picture there. And I would like to, even though you've, you've maintained our vertical articulation requirements, I would like to see even greater articulation. Unfortunately, I can't dictate retail use. We learned that last week or last month when we talked about the Victory Hotel when we were looking at design. We can't say you have to have retail there because the use is not a design issue. But that being said, I would like to see some retail there to, to help this succeed in invigorating the pedestrian environment. The materials, again, I, you know, that's more of a Stage Two thing, but I would like to move away from, let's call it the smooth sand material, which is perhaps the hardy board there and the smooth plaster. I'd like to see something a little more interesting in that, perhaps more of the perforated metal panels or that sort of thing. Whether it's historic or not, you know, we can't, you know, we can't decide that now. I'm surprised that the issue hasn't been brought up earlier because the building has been out there for so long, and the city's been doing so much with historic resources. I really can't address whether it's historical or not, and once they pull off that facade, you know, I don't know what's under there, and I don't know if there's still any historical integrity there. The alley, you know, that's not really for us to say we're going to give it or not. Am I correct? That's something perhaps at some later stage. Clearly, the alley, I think, is presumed, is being presumed to be dedicated back to the property owner, so they would make this thing work. I don't think this thing would work if they don't have the alley. So that's, one of the residents raised that, and it's really nothing we can address at this point. So trying to, you know, more specifically, limit my comments to the scale and the massing, those are my discussion points with regard to the articulation, both horizontal and vertical. vertical. And that's really what I think I can focus in on today.
Okay, thank you. So, I'll give my comments. Let's see if I want to, let me ask, let me just ask a question or two of staff. So, when we vacate an alley, we transfer full ownership rights to the, to the project?
I would actually defer to the city attorney to answer that.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Brotman, and Mayor Protem Brotman, and members of the City Council. What the city retains is a right-of-way for the public over an underlying fee. So, typically, when a vacation occurs, the property owners on either side of the center line own the underlying fee. So, the vacation of that right ends up resulting in that property being, the fee portion of that property going to the, back to the underlying property owners is no longer burdened by a public right-of-way. So, that's what, the net result of the vacation, that's a typical scenario, that to a center line of an alley or the center line of a street, the underlying fee is actually owned by those adjacent property owners. And it would go back to them.
I see. But what would we retain? We would retain certain rights of use, public use, public access, or no?
Typically, no. In a vacation process, they would have to establish that it's, there's no longer a public need or necessity. And of course, the, the city manager is very experienced in this, but that, from a legal perspective, that is what occurs to the underlying fee. Once a vacation occurs, it could be done in a summary process or through a normal process. But that would come back to the City Council as a separate request.
That is, that is correct.
We are giving up kind of public space, in a sense. Publicly accessible space, even though the, the public agency doesn't own it outright. Is that?
That is correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Right.
Okay.
The ownership always, as Ms. Van Miden mentioned, the ownership always, the underlying fee, what's called legally, is always to the adjacent property owners.
Okay, okay. Now, the park across California, what would the ownership status be of that park?
That is still something under discussion, but the, the idea here is to have a turnkey operation that would be transferred to the city.
So, be transferred, that rights, in perpetuity, rights would be transferred to the city?
There is still more discussion, negotiations, negotiations that would need to be vetted out as part of the development agreement in stage-two.
Okay, okay. So, all right, thanks for those. I guess my, my overall comments are that I do agree that, I mean, I like, I like the design. I think it's, I do think it's a lot better than what we, what we've seen on Central and the, and the kind of, the kind of architecture that's led to such a backlash in the community. I think this is definitely a step in the right direction. But given how kind of iconic, in a way, this, this location is, and how big it is, this almost an entire city block, I do agree, I think, that we should reach higher. This may check the boxes, but it's not, it's not thrilling. And I think we should have something that we really are going to be proud of. And I'm, I'm not feeling that, and I'm not getting a sense from the public so far, at least people that I've heard from. I'm not getting a sense that people are super excited about it. So, and I think that is all about mass and scale. And I think the idea of maybe some greater vertical articulation would be interesting. I was reminded that Bradley, when you joined, you talked about your vision for going higher and narrower as a concept, and we're not doing that here. And I'm, I'm wondering if there's a way that we can approach it like that. A little bit higher, some areas lower, and other areas. And, and I should stay kind of stepping back. I don't have any problem with this kind of density. I think we need this housing. These numbers don't frighten me. I know there are a lot of people worried about water and power and traffic, but I think that ship has sailed. We need, we need to provide housing. And even when it's not affordable, I mean, we are going to have a good slug of affordable, but even when it's not affordable, it's adding to the housing stock. It's going to put pressure on vacancy rates. It's going to bring prices down. All that is stuff we need to do. So, I have no problem, this being dense housing. I just think it can be more kind of architecturally interesting. And I mean, if going up and doing things, we're adding some units to make it pencil out, because it's more expensive going up, I don't particularly have a problem with that. So, I just, I just kind of want to say that. The issue about adaptive reuse versus demolition, I did ask when we first met about this a couple of months ago, for you to look into that. And I have to say, I'm a little disappointed that we don't have an answer to the question of whether that art deco facade exists and what condition it might be in if you stripped off that outer cladding. And I'm not entirely comfortable with the idea that we're going to push this over into an EIR, because we're, we're just too far down the road. And since it's already not recognized as historically significant, I don't even know if, if an EIR can require mitigation if we find that, in fact, that facade exists, because we've already kind of passed the point where it's historically significant. Am I making sense on that? And feel free to tell me I'm off-base.
Sure. Councilmember Protem, Mayor Brotman, and members of the City Council, it's a little early. One of the first stages here, after there's some feedback from the City Council on this preliminary design. The next component of that is to undertake an initial study. And as part of that initial study, the determinations are made whether or not there are significant impacts, and those include on historical resources.
But it's not a historical resource?
But this is an individualized assessment, as compared to a survey or other assessments that have been made. This would be an individualized assessment of the building. Right now, there is a Phase One, but that would be taken even further in terms of analysis. And if there are feasible mitigation measures, those will be recommended, required to be recommended.
It just, it does seem like it's raising the risk and putting pressure on all of us if we get further down the pike and we find out that there really is an opportunity to preserve that art deco facade. I would rather know that now and not go through a whole lot of additional work. But I'll just, I'll just put that out there. The whole thing about activating the streetscape, and I agree, I understand about retail maybe being challenging. I think the thing to think about is that we're going to have, this whole segment of Central is going to be redesigned, right? We're going to have the bus rapid transit. We're taking out a lane on each side. We're going to have a protected bike lane going down. It's really going to be a very different-looking corridor. And, you know, to describe it as, what did you describe it as, like a secondary corridor, a tertiary corridor? I mean, it's, I don't know what it's, what it's going to be in the future, but we really want it to be, we want to activate it. And I don't think live-work activates it. And one thing in particular is there's no grocery store anywhere nearby. Anybody in that building, and there are going to probably be over 1,000 people in there, anytime somebody wants milk or anything ahead of lettuce, they're going to have to get in their car. You know, the closest is Target, and I'm sure how many people are going to go to Target for their groceries, and that's an 11-minute walk, and people are not going to do that. The Trader Joe's is almost a 20-minute walk. That's, I think that's something that's really missing in that area, and we need it. And we need to support this building, otherwise, we're going to, we're going to have that traffic problem. And I agree, I mean, I think we should have some other uses there mixed in with the live-work. And yeah, we can't say specifically what it is, I guess. I don't, I don't really know how that works. But I also agree that this is not really, quote-unquote, "active and engaging" uses of the ground level, in my, in my view. So, that's really, I think, what I have to say. I think we can do better. And I don't feel comfortable today approving it for Stage One. And we'll go back to Councilmember Asatrian.
We actually have four alternatives in front of us. It's not just approve or deny. So, we can approve with the recommendation, we can create, if we go actually with alternative four, we can approve the Stage One with staff's recommendation condition and subject to design recommendations made by City Council.
Councilmembers, do you mind if I address a few? I'll give you a very quick.
Okay, sure.
I just wanted to explain a few things that were brought up, and the reason why we took the direction that we did, we've been working with city staff for over a year and a half on this project, trying to come up with a design that meets the DSP and meets the intent of what everybody worked so hard on, so that you didn't have the same issues that you have seen in the previous buildings that were constructed within your downtown. What we're asking for today is for you to approve the, the project that aligns with those DSP, and for us to go back with city staff and to work with them on something that we are proud of, like we, like we mentioned. I do want to talk about height for a second, because that is critical for our design, and I think it's, it's great if we all have some context. The building that you are looking at today is what's considered a Type III stick-frame podium project over a Type I, meaning we have stick-frame construction over concrete construction. If we want to go any higher in building height, we have to change our building typology and go to what would be considered likely a Type I, which would be an all-concrete or steel building. We cannot underwrite and make sense of an all-Type I building, and our project would not be able to move forward. Our goal is to propose something to you guys that we can afford to build and that helps with your regional housing needs assessment and that is good for the community. So, I ask that you give us the opportunity to work with city staff by approving this project today and allow us to come back to you for our Stage Two with something that we are all proud of. Thank you.
Let me turn this back. If Mr. Calvert, if you could give us some guidance on what our options are and how we move forward, given all the comments that you have.
I will try to summarize this as best as I can, and Mrs. Adi, please feel free to interrupt me. You can approve this and say yes, with all of these comments and conditions, for us to go back as staff and work with that applicant. And then, when they come back for that Stage Two, you can determine whether or not they have sufficiently answered the concerns and the questions, the comments that have been raised here today. You don't have to say no in order for us to go back and work with them to do this. You can obviously always decline, say no, they would go back, redesign, return at a later date. Those are really the, kind of the two primary options, from what I'm hearing in this discussion. There are clearly some comments and considerations that you would like to see changed, improved, evolved. So, again, you can approve this, and we would continue to work through this with them. Saying yes on a Stage One does not obviously grant them an entitlement or the ability to construct.
Okay, but even with the, how substantial some of these comments are, I mean, what's, what's the difference if we say no to Stage One, and they come back again, and we do Stage One again, or we say yes, and then we're expecting all these modifications in Stage Two? How does it, how is it different for us?
It's really not a substantial difference. It's really about just kind of keeping the forward momentum going.
Okay, well, I'll see what, where my colleagues want to take this, considering that it's 5:15 already.
Can I get a clarifying?
Sure.
If we say no today, and they go back to the drawing board, even though they've taken notes, then we're going to start a whole new process, right?
Correct.
Like, with respect to the history of this project? Okay, I just, I'd like my colleagues to be kind of mindful of that. I personally would like to see that we have continuity on this project, and all of our comments are incorporated into the history of this, and that we don't start from scratch.
Mayor Protem, I just want to alert the, the Council that the way that the motion is written is subject to the, any Council comments and our conditions that are on. All of the comments that have been made and recommendations that have been made so far have been recorded, and any approval motion would be subject to all of those conditions. So, the expectation on the return was that those would be met and addressed in a more finalized design that has undergone an environmental review process, a complete environmental review process.
Do you, do either of my other colleagues have any comments, or does somebody want to make a motion for how we proceed?
Well, I just want to say that they, you know, they've been working on this for over a year, and I think if, you know, if we approve Stage One and they comply with, when they come back to us again, comply with some of our conditions, then I guess we should move forward.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so my comments are, are just that the decision we're making today is generally on the scale and the massing. And although we did point out some issues that we'd like them to work on in the Phase Two, that's not really before us. A vote on Phase One does not mean that we're going to be bringing the wrecking ball into the Sears property next month, but it's a step, a general direction to the design staff as to what we're looking for. I'm okay to move forward with it and to really look closely at some of the next designs that were presented with in more detail.
Okay, so I'll take a motion then.
I'll move, move that.
Well, we have four alternatives in front of us. When we move on Alternative Four, what are you making the motion?
Making the motion that we approve of Phase One, taking into consideration all of the...
On Page 21, no. So, that would be, for example, if we just took in council, it would be Alternative Two. If we took in staff and council, it would be Alternative Four. And if we move forward with just staffs and without ours, that would be Alternative One. Am I...
Well, I think what we're saying, I think what I'm hearing is a motion to approve Stage One with the direction provided by council and staff. I know staff also had a condition, so we will include that condition in, and it'll be both, okay? That's what you were trying to...
So, that would be Alternative Four.
Okay.
Whatever, whatever.
If I may, Council, it would be Alternative Two, and as part of that, you would instruct staff to move forward with staff's recommendation, or staff's conditions as well.
As well, yes. Okay. So, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And we'll have a roll call now.
Councilmembers Asatrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian? Mayor Protem Brotman?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem, are we able to put off the next item to another meeting?
I would love to, and I will, yes, I would recommend that and ask the...
Yes, Mayor Protem and Council, that is the plan as, as we're moving forward. We'll continue that item till next week. And for the viewing audience, the regular council meeting this evening will start at 6:30 instead of 6:00 PM.
Okay, okay, thank you. So, so item number two will be continued to next week, and we don't need to vote on that, do we? No. Okay, and so I will take a motion. Oh, do we have any other general public comments?
We do not.
Okay, then a motion to adjourn?
Still moved, seconded.
Okay, so we are adjourned at 5:19 PM.
Close session. Close session.
Yeah, now we have to open...
Council.
Now we have to open Council, yeah.
Roll call.
Okay, are we, are you on? Oh, closed session, okay. Okay, so now we'll call City Council to order for closed session at 5:19. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Asatrian?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Najarian? Mayor Kasakian? Mayor Protem Brotman?
Here. And for the record, Councilmember Najarian is here, and I hear his voice behind me.
Yes.
Okay. And can you read the items into the record for the closed session, please?
Yes. Closed session, item A, conference with real property negotiators. Property location, real property generally located at the terminus of New York Avenue near Park Vista Drive, commonly referred to as Mountain Oaks. Negotiating parties, F E N M Inc., employees, defined contribution plan trust dated July 10, 1984. Agency negotiators attending the closed session are Rubek Olanyan, John Tachdalian, Michael J. Garcia, Gillian Van Miden, Bradley Calvert, Jason Bradford, and Onig Bulanikyan. Instructions to the negotiators will concern the price and terms for the acquisition of property. B, conference with legal counsel pending litigation, F E N M Inc., employees, defined contribution plan trust dated July 10, 1984, versus City of Glendale at all, L A S C, case number BS16989. C, conference with legal counsel pending litigation, Murphy versus City of Glendale, L A S C, case number 20STCV29677. D, conference with legal counsel pending litigation, Topad Zikian... D, conference with legal counsel pending litigation, Topadzikian versus City of Glendale at all, L A S C, case number 22STCV36445. E, public employment attorneys. F, conference with legal counsel pending litigation, Kazanjian versus City of Glendale, L A S C, case number 20STCV41402. G, conference with legal counsel pending litigation, California Rifle and Pistol Association, Inc. at all versus City of Glendale at all, U S D C, case number 2222-CV07346-SB-JC. H, conference with labor negotiators. The city designated negotiators attending the closed session are Rubek Olanian, John Tachdalian, Michael J. Garcia, Gillian Van Miden, Paula Adams, Jason Bradford, and Mark Young. The names of the employee organizations are Glendale City Employees Association, Glendale Management Association, Glendale Police Officers Association, Glendale Firefighters Association, and IBEW Local 18 Unit 40. Unrepresented employees, executives, and confidential employees.
Thank you. We're going to do all that in an hour. Okay, we will recess to closed session.
Wait.
Oh, oh, that's right. Do we expect to report out?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protam, we expect to report out on the public employment attorneys, which I have listed on my agenda as E, unless that's been updated, and then F, which is the conference with legal counsel pending litigation, Kazanjian versus City of Glendale. Those are the two that I expect to report on.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now we can recess into closed session. I'll get there.
We'll get there.